We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike, do you need us this time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get to the next item on the agenda, Jen, thank you for identifying the need for us to adopt our meeting schedule. So pursuant to the state statutes, we have to adopt our regular meeting schedule. And so I would ask for a motion to amend our agenda so that we can consider and adopt next year's meeting schedule.
I'll move to amend the agenda to add the 2026 regular scheduled meeting dates for the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's put it right before the communications, Mike. Is that fine?
Wherever you like, sure.
All right, let's do that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? For the members of the public, we'll publish these, but there's nothing new about them. It's the same regular first and third Mondays, with the exception of when we have holidays that fall on those days. All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our November 17th meeting.
Move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 17th?
Just, I'll second this, an edit that I was going to make. Under New Business 5.2, it should be Cider Lane.
Oh, yep, got it. See where he's talking about, Jen? So it's on page two, New Business.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Any other comments, suggested revisions? You're welcome, by the way.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
As far as I'm concerned, you're welcome to vote on the minutes, even though you aren't here. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, next item on our agenda are appointments. Does not look like we have any. So before we move on to the communications, we will take up the item we added to the agenda, which is to adopt the regular meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen meetings in 2026. Anything you want to add, Mike or Jen?
No, this is to comply with Connecticut general statutes. And we've even added the January 4th, 2027 date so that this time next year, we have a little bit of breathing room when we adapt the '27 schedule.
Any questions or concerns? If not, I will accept the proposed motion.
I'll move that we approve the attached list of regularly scheduled meeting dates for the Grand B Board of Selectmen for 2026 and January 2027. Second.
All right, we'll give that second to Mark. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on our agenda is a plus-one budget narrative. I know Mike's going to take the few minutes and walk us through some highlights, but I always like to kind of just lay the groundwork for this so that folks who are new to this process are kind of familiar with where we're at and what you can expect next. So really, the purpose of our plus-one is to have our team tell us and have us tell the Board of Finance where we think we're at in terms of the municipal budget for the upcoming fiscal year, what we think the priorities are. It's a 30,000-foot level. The purpose is to give the Board of Finance some indication so they can also hear the same from the Board of Ed and use that information in our three-board meeting and beyond to help set their guidelines. It's a very high 30,000-foot level. Tonight, we'll go through the 30,000-foot in a little bit of detail. As you've seen it, there's not a lot of detail in the plus-one. There never is. It's intended to be the high-level numbers. We will follow it, as we always do, on the Board of Selectmen's side with a very detailed budget workbook that has every piece of information I think anybody would want. And we will go through it in great detail in the budget workshops that follow. Tonight, either in public or members of the Board of Selectmen, if you have any of those 30,000-foot questions or concerns, you know, express them tonight. If not, you can email them to Mike in the next few days, if you can, with the holiday schedule. It is our intent to take action on the plus-one on our next meeting, on the 15th, again, knowing it's just a starting point. I will say this, I think our team did a great job with a proposed budget that's at 2.2%. Given that our contractual obligations to our employees are in the 3% range and inflation is above the 2.28%, there's nothing significant in here. Mike's going to give us, with the exception of a significant increase in funding for the ambulance association. So having said that, Mike, why don't you highlight what you want us to know, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the members of the public and this board, I'm going to linger a little bit on a couple of different areas. As the chairman mentioned, the plus-one is for the general fund, and that's for fiscal year '27, which begins on July 1, 2026, and lasts 12 months through June 30, 2027. We know today where we think we're going, and this estimate will be refined as we get closer and closer to the presentation to the public, which will be sometime in April. There will be budget public hearings. Those are scheduled in March. But the first thing I look at, being in this realm for a considerable number of years, is 10 individual metrics. Unassigned fund balance of the town. Where is the medical reserve of the town? How is the pension funded? What discount rate do they use to fund the pension? How is your OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, funded? What is the discount rate on that? What's the town's bond rating? What's the town's bonded debt? What's the collection rate? And then what is the size of the grand list? Those are the metrics that I look at. And at a glance, Grand B, as I've said all along, is exceptionally strong, not only in one or two of these metrics, but virtually every single one. The unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2025, stands at just over $9 million. That is 15%, a little more, 15.5%. And that is a good thing. The medical reserve, a year ago, stood at under $300,000. What you want to do is, we are a self-insured community that provides a host of medical benefits for our Board of Education and our town employees. We've able to grow that balance to just under $1.6 million, and I'll talk about how we did that in a little bit when I get into deeper details. The pension is funded. If you're aware, a pension is a series of promises that we've made to former employees, and those come due in the form of payments on an annual basis. So we have an outside actuary, the Milliman Group, whose principal actuary actually lives here in Grand B. She measures the liabilities, and we have set aside cash reserves, investments, if you will, just under 97% of our total liability. That not only is remarkable, but compared to the rest of the state, puts Grand B certainly in the top quartile. The discount rate, meaning what we expect that that money that we set aside is going to earn, is at a conservative 6.5%. The same is true with the OPEB-funded percentage. OPEB essentially is talking about retiree benefits that we have historically promised certain employees, quite a few first responders, but it used to be a common theme back 20 or 30 years ago. So we have legacy employees that we continue to pay medical benefits out for. And we are 57% funded, just under 57% funded, and we have a nice conservative 6% discount rate that we expect that, over the long term, we will invest. The importance of both a pension fund and an OPEB fund is by pre-funding it, meaning putting away the actuarially determined contribution on an annual basis. We'll save the town's taxpayers 70% of the cost of those benefits if you simply said, "I will pay as we go," as opposed to pre-funding. Our bond rating is a strong AA+. Our bonded debt is relatively low comparatively, at $12.3 million at June 30, 2025. And you'll hear me talk a little bit about that because one bond initiative or one bond tranche has come off the books, and CPAC is working on making a recommendation to this board as to perhaps what should go to the voters to be considered moving forward. The collection rate is a healthy 99.32%, and our grand list value is just under $1.4 billion. That at a mil rate of 3.313, that's as of June 30, 2025, raises $44.5 million, just under. So again, all of those metrics are strong, and in each and every case, the town of Grand B has good policies and procedures to make it strong or to continue to allow it to be strong. Now, shifting to the fiscal year '27, the budget process in brief for those of you who are at home starts in November, where directors prepare estimates for the operating and capital budgets. In December, which is tonight, I provide you with a plus-one fiscal '27 narrative. In January, the three boards meet. That meeting is tentatively scheduled for January 20. In February, the Board of Finance provides final budget guidance and mil rate targets to both the town side and the Board of Education side. And I want to stress, the summary that I'm giving you tonight is just the town side. The Board of Education still has to complete their plus-one. They have to bring it to their board, and then it'll all come together on January 20. In terms of March, the workshops begin. Those are open to the public. We would encourage anybody to come out with questions. And then finally, in April, the Board of Finance makes the final budget adjustments, and then the residents go to the voting booth in a form of direct democracy. True to this year, as it was last year, the town is using ClearGov budget software, and things like base salaries by position by department are incorporated into the ClearGov budget document. So if you want to know what I make, go to the budget book. If you want to know what the finance director makes, go to the budget book. If you want to know what a Step 1 officer makes, go to the budget book. If you want to know what a top-step officer makes as a base salary, go to the budget book. I heartily encourage everybody. We try to be transparent, and we do it with a budget document that tells a story. Presented in the document that you have in front of you are four years, actually, five years, when you compare fiscal '27, when you include fiscal '27, but it applies fiscal year '27 to the last four. And to give you an example, in fiscal year '26, a year ago, on the town budget side just for the operating, we had a $14.1 million budget, and we're projecting that that will go up in fiscal year '27 to 14.4, or an increase of $336,000, 2.38%, almost identical to what we presented last year. Debt service and capital are year-over-year pretty stable, so I won't go into a lot of detail there, only to tell you that the same capital budget has been submitted moving forward. It addresses a number of things like road repair and an allotment for new police vehicles and so forth, but year-over-year, there's not a lot of change in it. Debt service the same way. We are, as you may have heard me in the past or at CPAC, the town generally bonds once every seven years, and we let that debt out there for a 20-year cycle. So in year one, we bond some debt. In year 14, we bond some debt. In year 20, approximately, we bond some debt. There are three tranches of bonds out there at any one point in time. One is coming off the books in fiscal year '27, leaving us with two outstanding to the tune of about $12 million and change. We expect to issue something around $10 to $15 million, depending on what CPAC recommends and the needs of the town, and that is hopefully to replace the debt that came off the books, not to increase it. We certainly have many more needs than we have the ability to fund, hence the reason for CPAC and the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance being heavily involved in the process. Now, when you talk about the $336,000, a 2.38% increase, when you get to the total, an increase in, a small increase in debt service and a decrease in capital budget, the overall town budget, when all of those things are considered, is up 2.09%. But the driver is the operating. So I'm going to do a little bit of a deep dive on the operating. Of that $336,000, $216,000, or 65% of the increase, is related to increases in employee compensation. We have four collective bargaining agreements, each of those went up 3%, and we also have non-union, which have also gone up 3%. So to give you an example, last year at this time, those people, approximately 62 of them full-time, were paid $6.9 million to deliver the host of services the community has come to expect. That's police services, that's public work services, that's town hall, a host of services, senior services, youth services, Parks and Recreation Services, all incorporated in that $6.9 million. Through collective bargaining agreements or non-union raises, we're up to $7.1 million or a $216,000 increase. Moving along, we made some small adjustments to competitiveness for library employees of 2,000, senior service bus drivers, which are difficult to get, 6,000, and that spread over several drivers over the course of the year. It's not any one. We are in the retirement queue for our fire marshal, so we have brought on a deputy. He will transition with Brian Long over the next, say, half-year or year, and that results in a small increase in the fire marshal salaries as we overlap. And the town engineer, there was a small increase in his hourly rate. Certain general fund salaries have been offloaded to other funds. That is not new. It's simply reported here. An example of that is the community services director. 20% of her salary is offloaded to the Parks and Recreation Fund. We also have $17,000 for a senior services employee to match some of the revenue that goes in there from a travel program. We also wanted to note that $35,000 of part-time labor costs associated with the operation of the transfer station were budgeted and paid in the general fund in the current year, but we've moved those in fiscal year '27 to the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund to better align the costs with where they belong. Over time, we are asking, in fiscal year '27, based on the trends, that a $51,000 increase is needed. $45,000 of that is predominantly the police, a small piece of that is dispatch, and $6,000 of that is public works. The reason for the police increase is we are running over our budget allocation this year. We've had two officers out for an extended leave on workers' compensation. We have another new officer in training. In the way they're doing the training schedule, we're incurring two hours a day overtime, but they'll get that officer out of the training academy approximately a month early. So for the last two to three years, the overtime accountant police has been understated, and we're looking to move it into the right-sized area. Again, we allow the police chief and the captain to respond to crime. We don't dictate that they cut back, but for our officers, there are two at any point in time on duty, and for us, it's a matter of safety, or for them, it's a matter of safety. So that's why we're requesting that. Medical benefits, as I mentioned, we were under $300,000 in the medical reserve at the June 30, 2024. We are just under $1.6 million in fiscal year, the year ended June 30, 2025. The lower amount was due to larger-than-average family units, adverse medical experience, including a number of catastrophic claims on the town side, and simply rising medical costs on an annual basis. That's what depleted the fund. We've restored the fund through some management initiatives. One, all labor contracts now provide medical benefits under a more cost-effective, high-deductible health plan. Stop losses are returning to a normal trend, and we shopped that out, avoiding a $400,000 increase last year. And as I mentioned, those things, in addition to solid projections going forward out of the medical reserve fund, says that that $1.6 million is where we want it to be, and now that it's returned to stable levels. Now, we've also got some activity within that, and that's one fewer headcount and two retirees that are no longer on active medical coverage, reduce that by 109,000. But the medical insurance takes that back up by about 40,000. So overall, we're pleased to report that our medical benefit fund is stable. It's at an adequately funded level, and we should see some stabilization moving forward. Certainly, that's the hope, and we monitor that on a quarterly basis. Let's focus our thoughts on the OPEB trust. OPEB is an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are the retirees that we have made promises to in the past. It's analyzed periodically, as I mentioned, as is the pension fund, and any time you estimate the liabilities, there is an actuarially determined contribution that the town has historically funded. It's a good fiscal practice, a good prudent fiscal practice, to fund the ADC on an annual basis, and that allows you to pre-fund, which relieves, over the long term, the burden by 70% that taxpayers would have paid. Now, there's a change in accounting methodology that everyone should be aware of. It does not directly impact the town, but it will impact the Board of Education. Several years ago, $2 million was set aside as a prior-year contribution to the OPEB trust. That is fully exhausted in fiscal year '26. That will cause the town contributions to go up, and the board contributions to go up, meaning there's no more subsidy to pay for that because it's been fully exhausted. So you won't see a heck of a lot of movement on the town side, but you will see a small increase on the board side for fiscal year '27, and a larger increase in fiscal year '28. That's something that the town will be working with the school board to have everybody get their arms around it. It is not any, it's not a new cost. It is a legacy cost that has been out there for decades, and the ability to pay it down so that the taxpayers don't absorb the whole cost to do that today is an important thing to have a discussion on. So continuing on, general government, PAINs was sold. They provide both our pickup of waste and our recycling. They were sold in 2024 to All American Waste out of Massachusetts. There is a 3% contractual increase in that contract. There are simply no good options in the state of Connecticut for disposal of waste. So that's a $35,000 increase over disposal costs in the current year. As you are aware, the town places a LAP policy, which is liability, auto, and property, with KERMA, that's Connecticut Inter-local Risk Management Agency. And we've been with KERMA for decades, and we do periodically shop our insurance coverage. The LAP program anticipates no more than a 5% premium increase, while the workers' compensation program is budgeted for a 3% increase. In total, that's $15,000 compared to the current year. We are on a new electric bid contract through the Capital Region Council of Governments. However, that is higher than the rates we came off of, and we will be paying $19,000 more over the next 12 months for electricity. And we've also looked at higher projected storm response for the use of our gasoline and diesel, and that's, we're asking for a $15,000 increase. We have certain software use and licensing costs, some of which you're aware of. If you remember, we've bundled the Axon contract, which is both the tasers, the body cameras, the cruiser cameras, the software that runs them, and the storage devices. And that will be a beneficial item over the life of the contract, which is 10 years, but it does represent a $37,000 increase. We are no longer owning some of these tasers. We will simply, they will simply be replaced by Axon as they age out or as they need to be, you know, replaced. Finally, we have the building software, which is coming, which has come online, and we've previously paid for the software out of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We can no longer do that. That funding's exhausted, so that $15,000 annual cost shifts over to the general fund. Kind of finishing up some of the comments, we have decided that it's more cost-effective to move the copier rental to a copier rental in lieu of ownership, and that's a $4,000 increase. And then we also have some other licensing of the Quality QDS software, which is assessors and tax collectors. That's an increase of about $2,000. On the capital funding side, we've mentioned that the capital dollars in fiscal year '26 are similarly moved forward into '27, and that will allow us to continue to fund the $1 million road repair on an annual basis, as well as the wear and tear on buildings and the scheduled replacement of certain equipment. Again, I've noted that CPAC, the Capital Priority Planning Advisory Committee, is regularly meeting, and they will produce a recommendation of a mix of Board of Ed and town capital projects for the Board of Selectmen somewhere down the road that the voters may indeed be asked to approve sometime in the spring or perhaps a little bit later. I want to reiterate that there is one bond initiative that came off the ballot, or one set of bonds that was fully paid. Think about it as your mortgage. Once you've paid your 20- or 30-year mortgage, you no longer make that payment. Think of it as us having three mortgages out, and we've paid one of the three down, and we're looking to replace it with another. As the first selectman mentioned, the town provides an $80,000 contribution to Grand B Ambulance Association. That's an increase of $60,000. There is a seven-page report that will be issued by the end of early March, coinciding with the scheduled budget public hearings. It's a comprehensive report being issued by the town that will analytically support the $60,000 increase. 60 of that, of the 80, 20 is embedded in the general fund budget. The other 60 is coming out of a special revenue fund and can be paid, hopefully, in perpetuity. The budget will, this budget increase will stabilize the financial condition of Grand B Ambulance. As simply put, insurance reimbursements do not cover the cost of the services they provide, and with recurring capital and medical equipment needs, this increase addresses that issue while allowing Grand B ambulance to preserve their endowment to address long-term capital needs. So that's great news for Grand B ambulance, and quite a bit more discussion on that to come. Finally, revenue. It's too early to fully understand the picture. The grand list will not be available till February 1st, but my expectation is there will be some growth realized by the full development of Station 280 and Harness Way. A special shout-out to Finance Director Kimmy Cheng and Project Management Office employee Betsy Mazada, who were instrumental in helping the town put the plus-one together. I am certainly willing to take any questions you may have, but that's the story as to where the budget's going.
Thank you, Mike. Apparently, we can start out on your end. Do you have any preliminary questions or thoughts?
I just wanted to thank everyone for their hard work on the plus-one budget. Quick, just to recheck on the taser, that bundling of the tasers and the cruisers, that was going to be, that's a cost savings anyway, so over time.
So the answer is yes. We're required by law to have tasers, to have appropriate training. We had a, for lack of a better word, a mishmash of, we own some, we rented some, some were old, some required this. This essentially bundled it all up, put it all under one contract, and we no longer have to worry on an annual basis about, we need a $62,000 appropriation to replace 13 body cameras. They come in automatically. They, this allows certainty for the manufacturer. It allows us certainty, and it allows us to do a better job getting current equipment, where that may not have been the case if we didn't go onto this package. We would have, we would have had a lot of orphaned tasers. We would have had a lot of orphaned body cameras. This brings it all on one, under one umbrella, and allows us to replace it as needed. So yes, it's, it should be a better deal in the long term.
That's all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mike, I was just wondering why the discount rate is different for the pensions versus OPEB?
The life expectancy of pensioners is different than the life expectancy of people who take our medical. You generally live a little bit longer on the medical side, so the investment horizon's a little bit longer.
And is the fact that the OPEB fund is only 56% funded, is that a problem?
No. Quite frankly, if you looked around the state, there are, of the 169 communities, there's probably two to three dozen that pay-as-you-go, which is a realization that they have no money put aside for a pension obligation, for a OPEB obligation. Many, many OPEB trusts out there in the community, above and beyond that two or three dozen, are funded at less than 25%. There are a few really lucky communities where their liability is so insignificant because they never made these promises to employees, that they're fully funded, but they are the exception rather than the rule. I would say you are in the top third in terms of, you have a trust, it is half-funded. Yes, it needs to be half-funded more, but we also have 20 years to get there. So, no, not a concern. We're doing everything we need to do to continue to slide money into it, to grow it, so that the taxpayers pay less over the long haul.
Thank you.
You bet.
So I have a follow-up question on the OPEB, so on page one in our budget, those numbers are just, as you mentioned, we have obligations and the Board of Ed has obligations. So what's reflected here is just a municipal obligation?
No. On page one is, is the townwide metrics. The $6.7 million in the OPEB fund, which represents half of the liability, so the liability is probably somewhere around 12 million, the $12 million liabilities for the town and the Board of Ed. However, when you talk about the actuarial determined contribution, I would say that 2/3 of the cost is on the board side because they have significantly more employees, and 1/3 the cost, as an approximation, is on the town side. So you'll, so the page one is townwide. What you see in the budget is only the town share, and we do not have any indication on the board's share. It's just not in their numbers.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and just so the public knows, I want to state this and invite you to correct me if I'm wrong. So generally speaking, the town ceased providing those benefits in 2002, so quite some time ago.
More than 20 years ago, the town made a conscious effort. Except for first responders, it closed the pension plan. Now, it's a single employer pension plan, and it pays legacy benefits to both town and board employees, but it is only open on the town side to first responders, predominantly the police, but it is still open on the board side. Yes, correct.
Okay. I had written down some other notes, but you answered all of my preliminary questions in your presentation. So Kim?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the increase to Granby Ambulance. That is going to be a huge benefit for the town moving forward.
Oh, well, I had a comment on the Granby Ambulance also. You mentioned that there's going to be a special revenue fund associated with that for the payments?
There's the $60,000 increase will come out of a special revenue fund. Yes.
And that'll be detailed in the report that's coming out in February?
So the report only focuses on Granby Ambulance's operations. I've been working closely with Lori DiPitisto and Chief Kate Coop. I have three years of their audited financials. We've pulled those together, and the town has provided a narrative. That is going back to Dr. Mafa, that's going to Kelly Rome, who participated in it. It'll go back to Granby Ambulance, just to make sure we have the lingo and all of that right, and then it'll be released to the public. You'll understand better, I think in simpler terms, why they do what they do. Essentially, as a, as a snapshot, they have, they have an endowment, a $1.1 million endowment at Granby Ambulance, and they have been using it in some degree to subsidize their operations. They also receive charitable contributions for the good work they do, and those have, to a large degree, been dedicated toward operations. If that continues, that $1.1 million endowment will no longer be available to buy essentially ambulances, which need to be bought about once every four years, and they're about 400,000 fully equipped. So I'll, I'll lay out in the report that what Granby Ambulance is doing, and this should be no secret to Granby Ambulance, I've had these discussions with Lori and Chief Coop, what they're doing is unsustainable. That's why our contribution needs to go from the 20,000 that it's at to about 80. If you recall, we provided, I believe the number was about 93,500 for an ambulance in the current year, and there's also a portion of it, and there's also about $123,000 contribution in a coming year for another ambulance. That will get the town out of that cycle and will require some things via the agreement that they use their reserve predominantly for ambulances. But the, the hefty increase will stabilize their operations, and that's the intent of the whole report, is to document for you, for the community, for Granby Ambulance, what had happened, and then how to move forward.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I'll just, I will say a little bit more on that. I want to thank everybody who's put so much time and effort into that. We're infinitely further along than we have been in the past in addressing an issue that we've all recognized existed. Mike and the Subcommittee of Fred and Kelly and the Representatives of the Ambulance Association have been working hard to get us there. We're in a good spot where we're capable of putting it in the budget to, you know, in forward thinking to make sure it's in the budget and we can plan for it. But we will still have to hammer out an agreement that make, as we've said all along, it has to be sustainable, and there's some other things that we have to get in that agreement. But I'm confident we can do that. And we've got, including it in the budget now makes sense so that when we get to the agreement, we've planned for the, the contribution, and we have till July 1 of next year, although I hope it doesn't take you anywhere near that long to get the agreement in front of us to finalize. So a lot of hard work has gone into it, and we're, we're getting close to getting that result. All right, anybody else on the board? Any other guys have any questions or comments on the budget? Okay. So again, what we will do, our plan is on the 15th to take some action on what we will forward to the three-board meeting as our starting point. And so if there's, if you think of anything between now and then, let Mike know, and we'll, our goal will be to take action on the 15th. All right, the next item on our agenda is to elect a vice chair.
If I could, Mr. Selectman?
Yes, sir.
Last term, the board trusted me to be the vice chair of this board, but I asked that the board to recognize Peg Chapel, her years of service on town boards, and also her professional experience, to make her the vice chair for this current term. Therefore, I would like to move that the Board of Selectmen approve Peg Chapel as the vice chair of the Granby Board of Selectmen effective on this day, first day of December 2025, and until such time as their terms end or they are replaced by the board.
Okay, before I second, accept a second, you will accept that position if we?
If elected, I will accept the position for asking.
All right. So now, Fred, were you about ready to?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Any questions, concerns, or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody?
Can I get your vote? Aye.
Thank you. I was gonna assume your aye. All right.
Before I would move on, can I just thank Mark for making that motion? Mark has obviously spent many years in service to the town, including as vice chair of this board, and I really appreciate him making a motion. I might be happy.
Agreed. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Granby Land Trust Survey, adoption and approval of the funding to pay for our portion of the survey.
Mr. Chairman, we're looking to do two things tonight. The first, I would direct you to Abby Kenyon's November 25, 2025 memo. She gives you the background on the conservation easement, and what we're talking about is excluded land. If you would agree, there is a motion that you would move to recognize the map prepared by DENO Land Surveying. That's the first motion. And the second motion has everything to do, if you're on the cover memo that I sent dated November 25th, I talked to you about the Holcombe Farm Stewardship Fund Trust. In that trust agreement, the third item, which I've included, completes a reference that says during the duration of the trust, upon grantor, which is the Board of Selectmen, pay some or all of the net income for such worthwhile and necessary support of the operation maintenance and capital expenses of Holcombe Farm. So the Granby Land Trust is paying half of the bill, and if you agree, the other half, with your approval, would come out of the Holcombe Farm Stewardship Fund Trust. That's $2,820, and it can be effectuated by the second motion on the first page.
Okay, before I entertain any motions, does anybody have any questions? Most of us will remember this, right? Our agreement, it took us a little longer than we anticipated, but our agreement did require the parties to actually, instead of just showing a map to a legal description of the excluded land, and we agreed from the beginning we would split that cost with the land trust. So this is all consistent with that. Any, any questions or comments, concerns? If not, then I think that what we should do is take the motion on Abby's memo first, which is to essentially accept the map and recognize it. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll move that, the Board of Selectmen moves to recognize the map prepared by DENO Land Surveying and Consulting LLC titled Holcombe Farm Excluded Areas Prepared for a Town of Granby and Granby Land Trusts, numbers 115, 123, and 128. Simsbury Road, Granby, Connecticut, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated 11/11/2025. Sheet number 1 of 1, as the official map showing the excluded land as described in the Holcombe Farm Conservation Easement and as shown in section, in Schedule B filed in volume 457, pages 689 to 719 of the Granby Land records. Second motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, I, I think it's implicit in that motion, but I want to make clear that if we approve it, we're, we're also authorizing the town manager just to include the survey as an exhibit in the agreement so that it's all in one place? You motioners okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, I will accept the second motion regarding the payment of our half of the cost of the survey.
I would move that the Board of Selectmen approved the payment of $2,820 from the Holcombe Farm Stewardship Fund Trust for half the cost of the land survey completed by DENO Land Surveying with an invoice date of November 18, 2025, with payments made to the Granby Land Trust.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the next item on our agenda is 83 Salmon Brook Road, I'm sorry, Salmon Brook Street, also known as Freshies. This is an item to set a town meeting date and refer to the Board of Finance to seek approval to sell the property pursuant to the RFP and the responses we received there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit of background, off-topic for just a second, this is very familiar or should be to everyone, as we have moved 603 Cider Lane through the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance, both places, they received an affirmative vote. A town meeting has been set, the legal notice has been published. That town meeting is 7 o'clock this coming Wednesday, December 3, at the Senior Center for all those residents who are interested. In the event that that gets sold, I believe it's 101,000, the same process is being followed with, we call it Freshies, 83 Salmon Brook Street. There is an attached memo from Abby Kenyon explaining the background. A request for proposal was issued. It was previously sent to planning and zoning for their information. They have found that the sale would be consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We have an executed purchase and sale agreement. I would also point out on page three at the bottom, there is deed restriction that no drive-through facility service window or drive-up lane shall be constructed or operated on the property. I know that was a question. We may want to handle that differently when it comes to the motion, but I would request a motion to accomplish the following three things. Approval of the sale by the Board of Selectmen, direct date town meeting to be held, refer it to the Board of Finance, and then after the town meeting, if it's all three green lights, we would move to, move to sell the property for $245,000 to Mr. and Mrs. Grillo.
Okay, let's start here. Any, any questions, concerns? Peggy, you wanna, you wanna talk about what we asked?
I'm all set.
Yeah, it occurred to me that on paragraph six on page three, there's a deed restriction that no drive-through facility service window or drive-up lanes shall be construed or operated on the property. I'm no expert in real estate law.
Yeah, cut it.
But my understanding is that deed restrictions can be modified with the consent of the beneficiary of the restriction and the property owner. And the document is unclear as to how any such modification would be approved or who has the authority to approve it. So I was hoping we could somehow include a provision that says that any modification of that deed restriction is subject to the Board of Selectmen's approval.
No, I agree. I'm not entirely sure whether it needs to be in the agreement or just the deed restriction itself or, or both, but I do think we should make it clear that the deed restrict, the deed is in favor of the town, and the Board of Selectmen has to act on behalf of the town. So is that enough direction for you, Mike, to work with Rich to get the?
So you would like it in the final, call it conveyance, or do you want it in the motion tonight? And then I'll relay it to Rich. It can, either way works for me.
No, we can, we can, we can put it in the motion tonight to direct you to make it clear that any modification or release of the deed restriction has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And we can, I think, we can leave it to you and the town attorney to figure out where it goes. You comfortable with that?
Yeah, I am.
Everybody else comfortable with that? Okay, anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
I had a question. The current exit from the building and parking lot is onto the driveway, and I believe then through the traffic light with Floydfield Road and Route 10. Is there any other exit from the property that's planned that would access Route 10 near that intersection?
No. Not that I know of, but I think to be full, a full disclosure, that any such thing would have to be approved by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is going to take this up because the buyer is looking to get a special permit to do mixed use. It's my understanding they want to do some?
A rental on the second floor?
Yes.
A tenant?
Yeah, like a housing on the top floor, retail on the bottom floor. So this deal has nothing to do with an additional driveway, but it's possible they could request one from the Planning Commission, so the, the folks out there who are one from the Planning Commission, so the, the folks out there who are interested should pay attention to that. I had no indication that they are asking for that, but I think people should know that, I guess that's a possibility. All right, any other questions or concerns? If not, I would accept the proposed motion.
I'll move that we approve the sale by request for proposal of 83 Salmon Brook Street in the amount of $245,000 from FNG Enterprises LLC, and further to refer the matter for consideration and approval to the Board of Finance, and if approved, direct that the town moderator hold a town meeting for the purpose of seeking final approval of the sale of this parcel.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Handful of items, bear with me, from my office. We continue to support CPAC for their review and ultimate action back to the Board of Selectmen. As you saw today, the fiscal year '27 budget and plus one narrative document was finalized. The sale of 603 Cider Lane is underway, town meeting December 3rd, 2025, at the Senior Center. And at your December 15th meeting, we'll have Chief Orr here, and he'll give us an update on the $4.6 million radio communications project. Over at the library, the library and the Granby Public Schools hosted the Third Annual Granby Children's Book Festival. Thirty-three local authors were displayed, and they had over 1,000 visitors. The library hired and trained a new Makerspace technician, Ash Irwin, started October 22nd, and we wish Ash well. Amber Weisek presented to CPAC on the library expansion. There's also a campaign council, looking at the feasibility study for a capital campaign, and then aside from the library board, they created a campaign cabinet. They also secured $28,000 toward exterior renovations at the Cossett Library. Kimmy and Company, including the tax collector and the assessor, she provided our outside actuary with the OPEM census data and looked at the pre-funding account as of July 1st, 2025. She also executed the replacement of a town-owned postage machine with a lease. She submitted the required documentation to our attorney to initiate a extremely rare but important process in the collection of taxes, and that is a tax sale. We have had one in the last couple of years, so as I said, they're rare, but we do move through the process to be sure that we're able to collect our taxes, to keep that 99% collection rate up and to be fair to those taxpayers who do pay on time. She's also began reviewing and adjusting the value of all motor vehicles for the supplemental motor vehicle list, looks to be a little bit higher than last year. And then finally, they sent out 400 personal property tax declarations. Shifting over to Abby and community development, the Plan of Conservation and Development Committee held a public workshop on 11/13. The Granby Center Committee will have a presentation of the plan on December 11th at 7:00 PM in the Senior Center. This was a post-postponement of the November 19th meeting. And then we've received and are reviewing the building permit application for a seven-lot subdivision on Day Street. John Lambert in Information Technology ordered necessary equipment to meet our cyber insurance requirements. Now the town and the Board of Education has cyber insurance. As far as the police department, they held interviews for a full-time dispatcher position, and a conditional offer was issued. They had a drug take-back event, 66 and a half pounds of drugs were sent for destruction from the town of Granby. They held interviews for a police officer in part-time dispatcher, dispatcher position, also conditional offers given. Patrol officers gave out candy to children on Halloween. Officer Avalon and Officer Tenucci held a food drive at Stop &amp; Shop. Crime and noteworthy items, so recognize that this document was locked down on November 25th. Subsequently, as you may have seen on social media or on some of the news stations, we had a serious issue here in Granby right around 11:30, and that was two, two young men, one of them certainly looked to have a gun. I want to be sure that everyone understands that we work closely with the police chief, and we get that information out so that everybody in the community knows what we're facing. But reporting back out, that's a current issue, it's not included in this report, but going back to the report, there was a stolen car from Murtha's Way, the car was recovered, and the occupants were arrested in Hartford. That is prior to this event, has nothing to do with that event, but it's unusual that you do find an arrest. Further, individuals arrested for stealing a car in Granby in April of 2025 after a lengthy investigation were arrested. And then two separate arrests were made for a larceny second degree for an individual who was stealing from their employer as a house cleaner. And then finally, individuals were arrested for stealing a car in Granby back in July after a lengthy investigation. So I had those items in the report prior to this current issue. It is extremely rare that a police department is able to arrest not one, but three different individuals, so I'm optimistic that the staff of the Granby Police Department will get to the bottom of the 11:30 incident. It is serious, but unfortunately, it has, it has hit other communities as well, Simsbury, Avon, and even Downstate, we think it's the same two individuals, but we're going to let the police do their thing, and just everybody out there, please take care. Public works, drainage repairs were completed on Cone Mountain. The driveway parking lot project at the field has been completed, when I say the field, I'm talking about the meadow on Salmon Brook Street. There was a curb cut that the state allowed us to make, and there was some millings that allow probably up to a dozen cars to park there. And when that meadow gets fully planted, I think that'll be a wonderful place for educational programs, at least that's the plan. As we reported at the last meeting, the Banshell Walkway Ramp has been completed. New England Aquatics has started the Salmon Brook Pond dredging project. Shepherd's Way has been paved to meet the original subdivision requirements. Kirk Severance is working with Mike Fusick, reviewing options for the sewer pump station. And then finally, Midstate Construction has started to work on the access road as part of the radio project. Final few items with respect to human services, youth services, Parks and Rec, senior and social. Commission on Aging hosted their first coffee hour on November 12th. There was a Thanksgiving luncheon provided to 100 seniors and help from the Air National Guards Flying Yankees, and our own first selectman, Mark Fiorentino, made the event a great success. Social services, Thanksgiving in December, holiday food vouchers were distributed to 115 Granby residents and their families for the purchase of their holiday meal. Parks and Recreation, the Holiday Marketplace will be two days now, December 6th and 7th. There's also holiday sugar cookie decorating on December 18th, breakfast with Santa on December 20th, and then letters from Santa deposited in the mailbox at the Salmon Brook Park House. That's in addition to the upcoming tree lighting, that's this coming Saturday, 4:30 here, and then some programming back at the Senior Center. Register of Voters, they want everybody to know they had record-setting municipal election, 3,912 votes cast. Total vote training for both registrars will be in Hartford today, and the system is scheduled to go live sometime in January. And from Jen, our town clerk, she fulfilled the statutory requirements necessary to support the register of voters in the early voting process. She assisted in the coordination and organization of the elected official ceremony, thank you to that, Jen. Participated in post-election training hosted by the Secretary of State. She brought on a volunteer for an outsourced project to assist with overflow tasks, helping to reduce the workload, and we thank Bob for that, if he's watching tonight. Enhanced the department's online presence by adding new content and resources, and then continue to support the notary services and the implementation of the credit cards processing. So a lot going on, Mr. Chairman, and I encourage everybody to get the whole report online, but those are some of the highlights.
Any questions, Mark, group, comments?
I had one. In the spring, they were looking to do a burn down at the meadow to support the increased flower development. They said that weather conditions weren't appropriate last spring, so it didn't happen. With the snow coming, would this fall still be an option for that activity?
So what had happened last spring was, if you recall, we were kind of in the throes of a drought. There was also the, I believe it was the Berlin Fire, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection was focused on. They will run the burn, so they were not in a position to lend us the support that we needed to have them assist with that. This fall was not ideal as well, so the next planned burn with the Meadow Group holding an informational session at the library sometime in April, well, I'm sorry, sometime in February, will be the latter part of February, the early part of March. Deep will be handling it, and we will coordinate with Lost Acres Fire Department to have an engine inappropriate, we believe it's three or four folks. The whole burn will take about 30 minutes from start to finish, and the, the goal is to revitalize that, to take out some of the species that aren't supposed to be there so that the meadow can look proper. So we're gearing up for a deep-assisted burn in late February, early March, with more information to come from the Wild Flower Group, based on an educational program they plan on holding at the library sometime in February. Thank you. You bet.
Anybody else? Mike, I just want to give a shout out to you and to John on the cyber insurance and those requirements for the public to understand, that sounds like a no-brainer to have cyber insurance, but that was a tremendous amount of work that actually started a couple of years ago, because our, a lot of our IT protocols and systems and equipment were so far out of date, we were uninsurable. So that was a lot of work to get that in order to get us back where we needed to be, so that, would you please pass our thanks on to John to do that?
I should see him tomorrow, so I will pass it along.
Thank you. Anybody else on the managers' reports? All right, we'll move on to the first selectman report, I'll go quick because Mike's already mentioned a couple of things, I will highlight one more time, the tree lighting ceremony is this Saturday, please attend if you can, starts at 4:30, it's a great way to kick off the holiday season. We're going to light the tree, we're going to do a little bit of caroling around the tree, and then there's events in the Senior Center for families and children. That's the same night as the live nativity scene down at Salmon Brook Park, which starts at 5:00, so it's a, it's a great opportunity to spend a couple hours together seeing what's going on in our community, and it's a great way to kind of kick off, well, I'm done with my Christmas shopping, for those of you who are not. Just encourage everybody to buy local if you can, there's a lot of stuff going on in our town in terms of our own vendors and so forth, holding markets and stuff like that, so I encourage everybody to take part and start with the tree lighting ceremony. I will also announce, for those of you, mark this down, if you're interested, we are going to do an open house on January 3rd, which is a Saturday, in the morning. The details, we will, I'll get back to you, we're finalizing them, but somewhere between 10:00 noon in the, at the Senior Center, the purpose of the open house, the, the plan is for myself, the Chair of the Board of Finance, and the Chair of the Board of Education to just answer questions about the budget process and the CPAC process, where are we at, what's left to do, where are opportunities for citizens to have input and feedback? We're going to do that both for the CPAC process and the, the annual budget process. It's a great opportunity to, to tell us what you think about ways we can improve that process, so if you care, just mark it down for now, we will definitely push it out through our, our communication system. That's all I had. We'll go, we'll start with you, Mark, you got anything?
Yes, I have, I have an item on the America 250 Committee. We are not holding our December meeting, our next meeting will be in January, that's the third Thursday of the month.
Okay. Thank you. Kim?
I just wanted to say thank you, the plus budget, plus one budget was quite enlightening to read, and I very much appreciate all the effort that went into that, as well as all the items in the town manager's report, and I'm just very excited to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Peggy?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
All right, say now, what do you got for us?
I have nothing tonight, except I've been out of town for the last two weeks, but somebody came up with a bunch of things that's happening. So for our sports, our winter sports start this week, we have our first best, our girls' basketball game on December 4th, and then we have our first boys' hockey game, uh, the 3rd, I believe. I believe that one's also home in the South Field, uh, where they practice. Then we also have our NHS volleyball night for 9 through 12 graders to compete, and just for bragging rights to win, it's on December 5th. It's very fun to spectate, especially fun to see like all the teams and how they like dress up and have fun. We also have our Model UN group, they will be going to their conference for U-Hart, um, December 5th and December 6th. They'll be representing as like the continent of Africa and fighting on topics like that. I believe that's it.
Uh, the Boston trip for the Spanish.
Yeah, there's a Boston trip for the Spanish classes, where they're going to be studying art and going to a museum.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, we will move on to the public session, we'll start with those in the audience here. Anybody here wanting to speak to us? Come on up, Bill. Thanks, we even a minute. We actually set an audible alarm today. So just a reminder, Bill, we, five minutes, we actually, we actually set an alarm that's, just so we're not distracted, trying to figure out how much time we got left?
Sure.
When it goes off, you'll know, and we'll know at the same time.
Okay, very good.
What you got?
Build brick 18, Bark Hampstead Road, first of all, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, hope you had a nice holiday, and congratulations to everybody that ran for reelection and won, or that won their new seats. I'm here as the President of the Granby Taxpayers Alliance, 165 members, as well as an individual taxpayer, and so on behalf of the GTA, I want to thank you for everybody that participated in our question and answer forums, that was really helpful for us to understand our neighbors better and why they were running for office, so we really appreciate that. Yeah, so I'm going to give my remarks at a 30,000-foot level, too. I'll start with the fact that the ECS formula, since the Board of Ed is 70% of our spec, I just want to let you know that the ECS formula is extremely broken. Granby is considered a wealthy town, and the way that the ECS formula works, Granby and other towns that are categorized like Granby are going to be disadvantaged, and it's supposed to happen this year, if I'm reading the information correctly. The formula is so broken that they can't manage it, and it's been pushed off for another two years, they can't, they can't even use the formula that they've devised to allocate the dollars for the poorer districts as well as for the wealthier districts. So I strongly urge you to get Mark Anderson and our, our state reps involved and get our voice heard at Hartford to get that fixed. So we need to take a position on that, because if what I'm reading is correct, two years from now, we're going to be in some pretty serious trouble, so let's try and, and maybe even coordinate with cost on that, because the other small towns are going to be in the same position we're in, so that's item number one. Number two is very concerned about making sure that we get competitive bids for all of our major projects, so for example, the library. I'm hoping that if we go to the taxpayers and we ask them to either bond, or we spend from capex, or we spend from current revenue, and we ask them to commit to some dollar amount for a library expansion, that we've got an architectural design, and we've got a plan for what it is that we're going to do, why we're expanding the library, and how it's going to be used, and that we've got three competitive bids upon which that financial ask is made, that would be the prudent way to do things. I'm not sure if that's what's going on now, but that, that's what we would recommend. Likewise with the pump station, I'm a little bit closer to the pump station issue, I've heard, Mike, I don't know if this is correct, but I think I was in a room and I heard a $4.2 million number quoted for the pump station. If that's not correct, then, you know, I'm happy to hear from all of you, but with the pump station, everybody, I think everybody in Granby agrees, we need more commercial revenue, and, you know, we have, we're constrained because of the sewer systems. I think most, most taxpayers in Granby have septic. I think most, most taxpayers in Granby have septic systems and not sewer, and we have to pay and maintain our own septic systems. We have to purchase those and maintain them. So, our position would be that, that taxpayers should not be required to pay for infrastructure, most of the infrastructure that would be required for commercial endeavors to operate and make profit, that they should have to pay for that. And if we are going to expand the sewer systems or the pump stations, then, again, if that's a significant project, which I'm sure it is, then I would like to see three competitive bids, so that the taxpayers know that, what the design options are, and what the costs might be in various scenarios. And that would be, that would hold true for any significant ask, that we would want to see the actual designs and the, and the bids. Also, I have a question about the pension fund, I assume, like any other pension fund, I would hope that we're investing those dollars, so that the 50% that we've prefunded is earning return on investment in equities, and not just low-interest rate fixed instruments, since the ask is 20 years from now. So, that's good to know. And with respect to the, the medical insurance stop loss, it seems like our spec and ag and our plan design perhaps wasn't as well-designed as it could have been, since we took a pretty significant hit, and so, in the future, I would suggest, and it sounds like that we've, there's more to it than just going out to bid, right? There's the design, so that you have the stop-loss attachment points set in the correct places, and you can do that by looking at claims history. Normally, 80% of your expense in claims comes from 20% of your people. A lot of times, it's cancer, heart disease, end-stage renal failure, it could be complex maternity care costs and prenatal, neonatal costs, and there are solution, there are point solution providers out there, and care navigators, where you can put a program in place. If you look at the historical trend over five or 10 years of those claims, you can put solutions in place that will help navigate people to the right care that's specialized for those kinds of claims, and that will help either eliminate or mitigate those claims. So, there's more, but I'm out of time, so, thank you for your service to the town.
Robert Flanagan, Wood Cliff Drive, I hope you had a good Thanksgiving, all of you. I'm glad that you're working with other people on the pump stations. I heard a figure of 4.2 million for two, and that's just totally outrageous. The other concern I have is, this is old business. You know, we have the Grand, and we have the 280, and we have the Center Shops, and I guess recently they went to court to drop their assessment, and it never went, you know, never finished through court, it settled out of court, and of course, they were reduced. That just happened at the Center Shops. Now, as taxpayers, as citizens, we have to jump through, go through a whole appeal process, so I hope you consider this. I know you want to develop the Center of Granby. You consider all this, because it's going to come back on you, and comes, comes back on us taxpayers. It's going to hurt us, okay, when they drop assessments. Also, with regards to the Board of Ed budget, it, it's, you know, there was almost a million dollars was overtaxed, and then we turn around, the Board of Ed turns around, they hire four full-time people, and now I understand, and I need, I just heard this, that they want to hire somebody else to do teacher evaluations, like a subcontractor. You know, I, I believe in many cases, it's done in-house, it's done by the existing vice principal and the principal, because they're familiar with their, their staff, and, you know, why do we have to spend more money and hire another, you know, another agency to do this? It, it's not, it's just, it's wasting money. But, you know, another thing, like I said to you about the assessments, another thing, you're doing a new survey. A survey was done, I believe, two years ago on a town as us, and the people wanted to keep the rural character of the town. I mean, Granby living, everybody that moves into the town, they always say they like the rural setting, the rural atmosphere. I mean, and we, we just, you're going back and doing another survey, but, I mean, what's the point here? That's what people like. Rural character, rural atmosphere. Thanks. Anybody on Zoom? Catherine?
Okay, Maureen, go ahead. Um, can you get me, because I did not hear Beth at all.
We had trouble unmuting Beth, so we went to you. Go ahead.
Okay. Anyhow, I'd like to extend my thanks to Sandy Hills, Mike, and Kirk Severance, because we now have a kiosk set at Salmon Brook Park near the walking trail. The crew worked very hard to put it together, Sandy helped Bill, who was my alternate, put together the front panel, and I've noticed people already starting to go over to the kiosk and admire it, and I think it makes a great asset to Salmon Brook Park. The only thing remaining now to complete it is the back panel, and I've been given that responsibility to develop the narrative that will talk about the development of Salmon Brook Park, and all the remarkable resource values that the park holds. So, thank you to everyone who was involved in that. I have some questions. If you have answers tonight, that's fine. If not, then I would look for some response later. The ambulance, I understand that the ambulance traditionally has an annual projected cost, and there is a fundraiser, were any of the funds from the fundraiser also contributing to the support of the ambulance association? My other question relates to the criteria for tapping into the $1.1 million fund that they hold, and what that criteria might be. And the other thing that I wanted to ask, too, is I know the towns share ambulance services, and do other towns who use Granby ambulance contribute to that projected cost that we will now be supporting? If you know the answer, it's fine, if you're not, then I'd like some information on those points. Are there any questions?
Nope, I wrote them down, I think we can answer one or two of them, at least. Thank you, Maureen, thank you for your work on the kiosk.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? Beth, are you still wanting to speak?
She's good. She's pretty good. Oh, yes, please. Can you, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Thank you. I will be brief, but I would just like to mention that I was very happy to hear what you said about having a meeting in early January, and I hope that gets a lot of publicity. Oh, sorry, Beth Carroll, Quail Lane, because I'm, I feel that a lot of the members of the GTA would be most interested in that, if you're saying you're going to be available for questions regarding budgeting and before the workshops start. I, I am very happy to hear that you would like to be having questions from the public. And following up on that, I just have, I'm, will be making a written request, but I've been trying to say to every board in the town, that a lot of us are very concerned about the extra money from this year's school budget, and where it exactly is right now. And I've made a request, that I think prior to the budget, everyone should know exactly of the, of the balance, where, what has been spent exact. I know there was a roof, I know there were bleachers, I know there were French textbooks, but I would like to know exactly what the total was of those three endeavors, and where the rest of the money, if any, has been spent since those updates were given to us, in writing or in the town news, has any more of that been spent? And if not, I, I'm not asking for the actual financial account, but I would like to have this number updated, at least monthly, so that people in town basically know where that money is, and, because we need to factor that in going forward, before we can actually worry about next year's budget. And I just think every board should know that that's an outstanding request, that the taxpayers deserve. I'm not saying you're squandering the money, but I would like a full accounting of it, and I just want to put that out there, so, I appreciate your considering this. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, let me, let me try to address those, and Mike will ask you to take notes on stuff that, so, Beth, both you and Bob kind of mentioned concerns about the Board of Ed budget, and I, I'm just going to ask you to, to direct those to the Board of Ed. They meet regularly, they're much more capable of answering your questions than, than we are. They, they're the ones that have the information, so, with respect to the open house, I want to be clear, we definitely are looking for input and to answer questions, and to get our citizens more educated on how the process works, and how they can influence it and provide input. We will not be going into the details of the operational budgets for this year, because they won't be ready yet, but we will, we on our side will be holding workshops where that will occur, but on the third, we're going to be taking the longer approach, here's the, here's when the hearings are scheduled, when the open, or when the workshops are, and, and taking input on how that process is working and how we might improve it. Maureen, with, I'm going to leave, we will get back to you either right away, or, or maybe in the budget workshop process, the two questions on how the ambulance association utilizes money that it raises privately, I, I feel more comfortable if we firm that answer up with their input, and the same thing with respect to the criteria on how they tap into their endowment fund, because it is their endowment fund, we don't control it. We'll, we'll try to get some information regarding that. Your third question is, do the other towns contribute? The answer is yes, East Granby and Heartland do contribute financially, I do not believe they are considering any increases in their, their current contribution levels, but they do increase, they have obligations to contribute to the annual operating costs of the ambulance On the plan of conservation development and survey, there might be some duplication in there, Bob. I'm not sure if it is statutorily required, that the review of our plan of conservation development is statutorily required, and whether a separate survey is required or not, I'm not sure. They are trying to do the best they can to get as much information, so, I guess I would say to you, there's no harm in repeating anything that you think is important that you've said in the past. The Center Shop settlement, get what you're saying, we had a full briefing on that at our last meeting, I'd invite you to go back and look at the, the settlement documents in our vote. It was pretty straightforward. They, they appealed their assessment to our Board of Appeals, as they are, have the right to do. Our Board of Appeals denied it, and, and stuck firm on our assessment, as they have the right to do under the statute. They filed a lawsuit to challenge that decision. The statute's kind of tight on what information the judge can do. We got right to the trial, and essentially, the judge said, if I were U-Town, I would settle, and our attorney's advice was, if the settlement that we're suggesting you take is actually cheaper than our fees to go to trial. That seemed like a pretty smart decision under circumstances, but we do understand and appreciate it, every time we settle the case, you know, there's a possibility that it can become precedent for other people's claims. Good point on the ECS formula, we do have to stay on top of that, and we'll try to do our best, but I do appreciate the recognition that that's one level above us. Those, those issues are being caused out of Hartford, and we got to deal with them every year. Absolutely, we'll get competitive bids on all of our, our capital projects, including the library, there's no question about that. The sewer pump stations are nowhere near $4.2 million, just, they're not. We do expect to have on our agenda, next time, a firming up of the numbers, so the pump stations' numbers have nothing to do with expanding the system's capacity. The two pump stations are 30 to 50 years old, so we're just looking at getting them to serve the next 50 years, and we will have an item on our agenda. We did get, we got not bids, we got multiple estimates on those two stations, Mr. Fuzick and Kirk and Mike have been working through those, we're going to try to firm up those numbers. The current plan is that, to, that the taxpayers, generally speaking, would not fund those replacements of the pump stations, because we would finance it out of the sewer fund, so the sewer users would, would pay for the finance of that. We will eventually, in our community, have to have some larger discussion about sewer capacity, which is a different subject than the sewer pump stations. The pump stations need to be done, whether we increase our capacity or not, they're 30 years old. The sewer, expansion of sewer capacity is a different discussion that, and there's nothing that the Board of Selectmen could independently do on that regard, there's lots more to come on that, so just stay tuned, it's not even something that's on our immediate radar, except that the current sewer capacity is being discussed in terms of the center study, because it has to be, and in terms of the plan of conservation and development, because it has to be, you have to kind of know what the future capacity is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, yes, our retirement funds are pretty aggressively invested, right?
We, we have a investment policy statement. If you look at the audit, which is online, you'll see what we're invested in, but it is roughly somewhere around a 65%, 35% mix, with a 65 in various equities, and 35% in fixed income. That number may drift a little bit, but we've enjoyed three consecutive years of double-digit increases, consistent with kind of what the market is. Fiducian is our advisor, the fiducian partner is a former Granby resident, so, they're also the preferred investment for municipalities in the state of Connecticut.
If you need more information, Bill, follow up directly with Mike. And last, on the insurance claims, and analyzing those claims and stop-loss and stuff, again, a very good point, it is something we actually do, regularly do, there's a committee that's set up that reviews those, at least quarterly, right, Mike?
We, we now do quarterly. I'm very much a metrics-driven analyst, and we now have better metrics on the fund than we've had in the past, because we do be quarterly now.
No. Maybe we can get you more information on that. All right. I think that's everything I felt comfortable answering tonight. Anybody else have anything else? We don't have a need for executive session, right?
We do not. I was, I was thinking about one comment that I want to make on, on the sewers, there, there was-
Okay, go ahead.
There were three documents that were passed out. One is the 10-year Capital Improvement Plan, which has a reservation of $250,000 for the two sewer pumps. There was an estimate that we shared, that we got from the Simsbury, who handles our waste processing, of approximately $1,280,000. And then we had a off-the-cuff tie-in bond estimate. I want to say that number was either 2.4 or 4.2. It was large compared to, compared to the other one.
It was 4.2, that's right.
Yeah. And it has never been considered, never. That would be digging everything up, the con vaults, everything. Rails, pumps, con vaults, electrical, and then covering it all in. I know that somehow that got legs, like we were considering it, but that has never been under consideration. The number, $1,500,000 for two pumps, the one on Salmon Brook Street, which serves the vast majority, and as the First Selectmen said, any costs related to the maintenance of the two existing pumps would come directly from the sewer users, not the taxpayers.
So I apologize. If that's where that number came from...
Yeah, that's the number Mike, Mike said with his outlaw question. Let me...
So, forget it. We'll be firming out, no, no, whatever, I gotta go back. I can answer afterwards, too. But we're not going to be anywhere near 4.2 million on the pump stations. We're going to firm that number up at our next meeting.
I just want to make a comment. You said about sewer, sewer update.
Nope, nope, nope.
Right, I got it.
All right. Anything else? If not, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.